Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. I call this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the city council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Any final action taken on conditional use permits requests here tonight are final unless appealed to the city council. Any final action taken here tonight on preliminary subdivision plans will be referred to the city council for their public hearing on February 1st, 2010. Any final action on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments taken here tonight will be referred to the city council for their public hearing on Tuesday, February 16th at 7:00. Council meetings are held here in the Carnegie Town Hall and these public hearings are televised. Any final action taken here tonight on a final development plan or a minor amendment for a planned development district are final. At this time, the Planning Commission will approve the consent agenda and the regular agenda. The consent agenda items are: Item number one is approval of the December 2nd, 2009 minutes. Item number two is Platts. Item number three, 2009-12-3, is a major amendment to subarea B of the Platinum Valley Plan Development District to add off-cell alcohol as an allowed use at 6811 South Louise Avenue. Item number four, 2009-12-04, is a major amendment to subarea C of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to add allowed uses of the RD Residential District as permitted uses within the subarea at West 32nd and Ellis Road. Item number five is 2009-10-2, is a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow construction of fourplex units at South Klein Avenue and West 56th Street. Item number six, 2009-12-11, is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow two-family residential buildings at South Southeastern Avenue and East Buckingham Street. Item number seven, 2009-12-12, is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at 701 South Minnesota Avenue. Item number eight, 2009-12-16, is a conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow motor vehicle service at 601 East Benson Road. Item number nine is 2009-12-6, is a final development plan in subarea F of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to construct a bank at Highline Drive north of 18th Street. Are there any objections from the audience to any items listed on the consent agenda?
Yes, number six.
Okay, we'll move item number six to the regular agenda and it'll be the first item that we address on the regular agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission to any items listed on the consent agenda? No? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda with the moving of item six to the regular agenda.
Moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is now approved. Motion to approve the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the regular agenda with item six added.
Okay. I'll second that.
Items been moved and seconded?
Madam Chair, item 12 has been requested to be withdrawn.
Thank you. So, item 12 is withdrawn, item six is moved to the first item of the regular agenda.
I'll amend the motion to exclude item 12.
Thank you.
And I'll resecond that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Been moved and seconded? I'll look for... All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries? Great. Okay, item number six. Staff report, please.
Evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Dave Loveland and I'll be representing planning staff this evening on this and other items. The applicant is Clint Ackerman with Signature Companies LLC. I believe he has a representative here this evening. This project is to be located in the Oxford Estates addition. It's a conditional use permit to allow two-family dwelling units, which is allowed in the RS2 Residential District by Planning Commission approval. The Shakes Sioux Falls designation in this area is considered to be a developed, developing area. Abutting zoning and land uses are generally single and four-unit residential units, both to the north, south, east, and west, surrounded primarily entirely by residential units, with a compatibility rating of a four. And as you may remember, as part of our Shakes Sioux Falls 2035 Plan, we have begun assessing compatibility ratings and you've been provided with the chart both individually and within your reports and in the material that's been given to you as part of the approval process for that. A four compatibility rating means that it's generally compatible with minor conflict potential. As you will read in your staff reports when we've got those compatibility ratings assigned, you'll see that within the report, we've addressed how the applicant expects to deal with any of those issues. If there are any questions on how those compatibility ratings are assigned or rated, then we can certainly go over that as we go further into this report and then later reports this evening. The conditional use permit standard for dwelling units is dwellings shall be located in areas where they are compatible with adjacent uses with regard to traffic, size, density, and other significant factors. The location of this item is on South Southeastern Avenue and East Buckingham Drive. The existing corridor development pattern in this area is for limited access arterials, which is along South Southeastern. There are individual... Access to individual properties will be located from interior public streets and there are no transit stops within 500 feet of the subject property. The applicant, I believe, has spoken with some of his neighbors and he may be able to address some of that tonight. Otherwise, water and sanitary sewer are available. And because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. Concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here, please?
My name is Paul Wester. I live at 5108 South Wells Avenue in Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Do you have anything to add, Paul?
No, I don't. Just a little bit of background. Where we're building these are... The back of them is going to be towards Southeastern, just to the east of our property across the street. The developer over there is doing the same thing along Southeastern. If any of you are familiar with the development at all, it's going to look an awful lot like our condos and our villas. There's going to be some brick in the garage. I mean, they're not going to look like your normal twin home. They're going to... If you look around the garage, there'll be brick. We're going to try to make them look as fancy as we can. They're all going to have basements. They'll have garden-level basements in the back of them. We're also going to be putting up a fence along Southeastern there behind those properties. And so, you know, I don't... We're real pleased with the way they turned out. We were... When we first found out that we were going to be in front of the board, it was right at their holiday season, so we contacted probably about 70... Well, we tried to contact everybody, but we were only able to contact about 70% of them. And we had no problem with anyone saying that they had a problem with what we were going to do. And we invited those people that we were... That I was able to talk to on the phone with the plans. The plans have been in our office since then and if anybody had any questions, they... I live in the development and I know almost everyone in the development and I don't think that anyone ever came to our office to look at what we had proposed. So, to the best of my knowledge, there's no one there that has a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Any questions for the petitioner?
Madam Chair, I don't specifically have a question for Paul, but I'd like to have Steve put the subdivision plat map up there and indicate which lots are affected. Thank you.
Madam Chair, to go on, I brought this question. Is it all of that area to the south, to the southwest, or does it stop? The one drawing we have, that one, shows it stops there.
It's going to stop. We're only going to go about... Oh, I didn't bring my map with me. We're not going to go all the way down east Buckingham. If you look past the black line to the west there, those will all be single-family homes. And Buckingham will go over to Wells Avenue and then that will be another exit out to Southeastern.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the staff report indicates slots 1 through 6, 40 through 46, and block 7, and 9 through 15, block 9. Does that correspond with what you're proposing to build?
It does.
Any additional questions for the petitioner? Thank you, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody from the audience care to speak on item number six?
Yes.
Come forward, please.
My name's Ron Valdez. I'm at 5140 South Manchester Court, Sioux Falls. That would be the corner on the inside of the horseshoe. That would be to the west of the proposed duplexes, which basically look like the condos at the south end that are currently there. They were changed as well from... They were supposed to be commercial buildings, like offices, and those were changed as well. The affected area in which I wasn't notified and I know really any of my neighbors next to me or in that same horseshoe area, I wasn't notified and we looked online. There wasn't anything proposed. As far as the blueprints I saw were new. As far as do they share the same restrictions in the area? Will they share square footage? You know, are... Because when it was sold and purchased as a single-family dwelling, that's why I moved to the area. And then now it's being changed. So, that's my concern. I have more concerns than them just changing. We weren't provided any information except a little tiny sign on the snowbank over the holidays that was covered mostly. And then if it wasn't that you canceled the meeting, we had a little more time to prepare. So, this was all new to us and I know the gentleman from Signature as well because we've all been at each other's homes. Our children play together and he didn't come to my house. And some of our neighbors, one of our other neighbors is here. He didn't go to her house as well. And she is just about four houses down because my daughter plays with her son as well. And he has several kids they play with. So, no, none of this was discussed other than the notice for this meeting. And my objection is to stay with single-family dwellings in the area because to be honest with you, that's why I moved there. Because that's how it was planned and that's how it was sold and that's why I'm there. I love the area, so I don't mind a little change, but the dwellings, the way they look, appear to be more of the condo-style homes that are at the end of Manchester on... It is Harrington? Yeah, that style. Except they're just in a... It's a two-unit building. So, is there any questions for me or...
Excuse me, sir. Are you on the east side or the west side of the horseshoe?
On Manchester. If you bring that up, it's number... It's the eight. I am on the... I would say the... On the inside of the horseshoe, on the corner. No, the other side. Yeah. That was just purchased, that right there. That's 5140.
Thank you.
And, you know, I don't see my neighbor left me. And then Jeff, he's currently in Iraq, so he doesn't know about this as well. He lives two down from me. And the one on the end, he contracts for Signature. So, that's pretty much the block.
Any questions for Ron?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Paul, can you maybe come back here and address some of Ron's questions?
Ron bought his house to the best of our ability. He had another builder build his house. We contacted his builder along with Envision and with Trademark Homes to find some of the people that... And I know Ron and I stopped over there. That's irregardless, but they weren't home. It was over the holidays, so it wasn't the most opportune time to get ahold of people. And if I missed anybody, that was my fault because it was my responsibility to call those people. But we did make attempts to call everyone in the development that we felt would be... Have questions regarding it. I apologize if someone didn't get contacted. It would be my fault that didn't happen. But, I mean, we've had those signs up since you told us to put them up and everybody's had plenty of notice. Everybody knows who I am in the development again. I'm in the development every day, all day long. And if they had questions, I guess I wish they would have come to me and asked me and I would have been more than happy to give them the information that was needed. I don't think... I mean, when we changed the condos, I think that when we went back and made the condos just to the north of where we're talking here into condos instead of office buildings, I mean, the neighborhood was in complete... Everybody was great. They loved the idea. They didn't want to see any more office buildings there. They turned out great. We've done everything in our power to make the development look as the best we can. I mean, Clint and I both take an awful lot of pride in what we do. And so, I think these are going to be very nice. I understand their concerns. I appreciate them. I don't think they have anything to be concerned with. And I'll be more than happy to sit down with anybody that has any questions in my office and talk about it. Again, I have no problem with that. And we'll lay it all out for them. They can see what we're going to do. Ron had some questions about the, you know, square footage and things like that. They're going to be a little... They're going to... They fall within our qualifications for the development, but they are... They're going to be smaller, but they still fall within the qualifications. But, I mean, we start to build a really, really big twin home, we're going to have... We won't be able to sell them. I mean, we're trying to... We're looking for a price point in the whole situation too, so... But again, I will be more than happy to sit down with anybody that's got a question in my office anytime.
Madam Chair, Paul, oftentimes, well, it's great to have signs posted, which is required. A lot of developers also combine the posting of the signs with a neighborhood meeting and bring floor plans and site plans and answer those questions. It would be a little bit self-defeating if we approved this and then people came and sat in your office because there would be no recourse.
I'll be more than happy to have another meeting. Everybody that I did was able to talk to on the phone. We invited them to have a meeting and they all felt it wasn't necessary.
Right, yeah. But apparently there are some neighbors that feel that maybe a meeting would be beneficial.
Two out of about 35 people, you know. Again, I have no problem with that.
So, if we made the motion tonight to defer this for 30 days to allow you to have that meeting, you'd be comfortable with that?
No, but I'll do it.
Actually, I understand. I just forgot what day it is. It's only two weeks.
That's fine. We'd like to get going on it. So, that's fine.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Paul? I'll seek committee action on item number six.
Madam Chair, since I brought it up, I would make the motion this evening to defer item six until our next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll second that one.
Item six has been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I want to support Meredith as well that the idea of neighborhood meetings and communication is vital to good relations before the project, during the project, after the project. And it's worth the time to give that extra effort. And I thank you, Paul, for waiting for that to... Final action. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any further discussion? No? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of deferring item number six signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item number six is deferred. Item number 10.
Good evening again. The applicant for this item is TradeCom Properties. I believe they are represented here tonight by Joel Engel. The purpose of this request, this rezoning request, is to develop residential office and commercial uses in conformance with adjacent properties. The location is the west side of Minnesota Avenue, just to the north of West 85th Street. And I believe that most people are probably familiar with the general location of landscape garden centers, which is what this zoning covers. The area in size is about 32 acres. The existing zoning is AG, agricultural. As we go through the abutting zoning and land uses, we look through to the north, it's Garden Village PD, which is also, I believe, developed by the same people. The compatibility... The land uses are developing office and residential with compatibility of four. To the south is a proposed Carris Corner Plan Development District, which is actually going to be the next item on this agenda. That's proposed commercial and office and residential with a compatibility rating of three. To the east across Minnesota Avenue, the zoning is RS2, O, and C4, and that's developing single-family and the rest of the property is vacant at this time with a compatibility rating of three. To the west is RS2, RD, and residential. Those surrounding land uses include existing single-family and two-family dwellings with a compatibility rate of about five. Number three compatibility rating indicates that there's a potential incompatibility and I believe that the applicant has considered that in some of the plans as they've gone forward. The zoning district acreages include about 10 acres of single-family residential, 2.6 acres of RD residential, about four and a half of RA1, which would be multifamily. And then they've divided their commercial and office portion into two subareas within the planned development district. And each one of those is somewhere in the neighborhood of eight acres, each one of those land uses. The subject property was annexed into the City of Sioux Falls in October of 2009 and a future land use map amendment under the old comprehensive plan was approved by the Planning Commission in November and by the city council in December. That future land use map amendment was applicable to the old comprehensive plan, as I indicated, and is no longer in effect. But the proposed zoning boundaries are in conformance with the new comprehensive plan that was just Shakes Sioux Falls 2035. The applicant is proposing, as I indicated, the applicant's proposing three conventional zoning districts of RS2, RD, and RA1, all of which are residential districts. And the planned development district will include C4, commercial, and O, office. There will be one access point from South Minnesota Avenue to serve the subdivision with the final location and types to be determined by development engineering plans, which are going to be considered by the city engineering office. And a traffic study with these applicant... With this applicant and then the applicants to the south is in progress. Maybe the applicant can provide an update on where that traffic study exists at this point. Bike trails and transit routes are not located within 600 feet of the property. We believe that the applicant is proposing a well-designed plan that transitions uses from the highest intensity to full compatibility with the existing neighborhood to the west. Any potential conflicts with properties to the east across Minnesota Avenue are minor and with development of subarea regulations for the commercial portion of the site will be mitigated in full. The applicant will also need to bring a final development plan forward to develop any properties within the planned development district. As I indicated, the proposal is adjacent to a rezoning request to the south with the Carris Corner. The applicants from both of these properties have been in contact with one another and are coordinating with the Public Works Office on a traffic study and access points to Minnesota Avenue and 85th Street. Because the subject application provides effective transitions and is in conformance with the Shakes Sioux Falls 2035 comprehensive plan, we are recommending approval of the rezoning with the subarea regulations as they've been attached to your report. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here, please?
Joel Engel with Sea Lemme Companies, 3408 South Sycamore Avenue. Just to address one of the points that Dave made, we have worked with the petitioner that's item 11 on the agenda tonight with an architect locally to develop a master plan for both of these properties, both item 10 and item 11 tonight. Part of that... Part of our discussion and part of our preliminary meetings with city engineering, with city planning, indicated that a traffic study would be necessary. And we have sought a proposal from HDR Engineering of Sioux Falls. We have yet to engage that study. We hope to have a meeting in the near future as landowners, as a group, to discuss responsibilities for that study and get that engaged so that we can keep the process moving ahead. Don't really have any additional comments. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Joel. Any questions for Joel?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody from the audience care to discuss item number 10? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
I'll move for approval of item 10.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second on item number 10. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item number 10 carries. Item number 11.
The applicant on item number eleven is Calvin Hogan Dorn with the First Christian Reformed Church. The location of this property is at the northwest corner of South Minnesota and West Eighty-Fifth Street, and about fifteen acres in size. Existing zoning is agricultural, and the Shap Sioux Falls designation is for a sub-regional commercial area. The abutting zoning and land uses to the north include the proposed Garden Village Two, which you just heard. To the south is agricultural in Lincoln County. To the east is C4 planned commercial. And to the west is RD residential, which is a developing residential area. Again, to the, proposed to the north is the Garden Village Two, and, and we signed a compatibility rating of three. And the reason for that is that there's a small segment where the commercial would, would abut the single-family or the multifamily residential, which would indicate a potential incompatibility. But as both the previous applicant and, and this applicant will probably attest to, is that they're working with each other to ensure that, that those, those, any conflicts would be minimized and that they will be able to move forward cooperatively together. The subarea A, which is to the west, the west portion of this property, is about three acres in size and is, and is the RA1 portion, which would be multifamily residential. Subarea B, which is C4, is about twelve, twelve acres in size. It would be controlled, as I just said, it would be controlled by the C4 planned commercial district. The subject property was annexed in 2003, and no zoning petition or development has occurred since that time. The existing corridor development pattern include both Minnesota Avenue and Eighty-Fifth Street are classified as limited access arterials, which is why they need to come forward with traffic studies to help determine locations and types of access points. The, a site-specific BMP will be required in order to detain stormwater runoff at pre-development levels. Proposed drainage easement must convey one-hundred-year runoff levels within the confines of the easement, and the applicant should work with the developers to the north on that. And I believe that they've been in touch with the city engineering office on any drainage mitigation plans. As I indicated, that there's a, there's a, we assigned a compatibility rating of three, but it is common to use multifamily land uses as transitions from commercial or high-intensity land uses to single-family or less intensive land uses. When doing so, however, the applicant should be prepared to address any potential compatibility, either by standards established by the planned development regulations, or at the time of final development plans, when they come forward, by mitigating issues that may come up related to scale, setbacks, traffic flow, and visual impact. The proposal is adjacent, as I said, the proposal is adjacent to the rezoning request to the north, and both applicants are working together. And because the subject application provides effective transitions and is also in conformance with the Shap Sioux Falls 2035 comprehensive plan, we are recommending approval of the rezoning with the subarea regulations as included in your report. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Madam Chair, David, both items ten, eleven are being rezoned to planned development?
Yes, the portion on, on item number ten was the west half was actually going to be conventional, and then their, the east half, which included their commercial and office, was going to be part of their planned development. This is entirely within the planned development, in their planned development district.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Petitioner here, please.
Good evening. Sam Allison, 3200 West Forty-Ninth Street, First CRC.
Carla Van der Leest with First CRC, 2901 East Street Six.
And I guess, I thought staff did an excellent job presenting. We don't have much to add, but if any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action. Item number eleven.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve item eleven.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item number eleven carries. Item number twelve. Staff report? I'm sorry, thank you. Item number twelve has been withdrawn. Item number thirteen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners. My name is Steve Randall with Planning Staff. I'll be representing this item and other items this evening. Item thirteen is a request for rezoning to a planned development district. It was a former boxing club. Perhaps you've been driven by there. It's up in a new industrial area to the north, but to the south, it's an existing residential area, has been for some time. The boxing club's been there for some time as well. The applicant, Joe Taylor, would like to change the zoning designation to make the property available for redevelopment, and at the same time, continue to use the existing facilities for office warehouse. Subject property is a little over an acre. It's in a single zoning development district, according to the, an existing development area, according to the new comprehensive plan. To the north, there's I-1 light industrial. To the south, RA1, east RA1, and west RA1 residential zoning. Most of it is single-family residential development, however. We've given it a compatibility rating of three, potential incompatibility. Because of the nature of the proposal to put in non-residential uses, we feel that a planned development district is an appropriate zoning to pursue. There are substantial capital improvements to the property. Hopefully, the developer can make use of that and come up with a project that is compatible with the existing residential development to the, that is adjacent. The planned development zoning regulations should accomplish that. We've proposed new regulations for the, the new zoning district. Those are included at the end of your report. Basically, we're recommending that the uses permitted include residential, church, wholesale trade, and office, which would, with mitigating design, could be compatible with adjacent residential uses. They would have to come back with a change in use from what's there now and request a final development of, of plan approval from you. The sign regulations would reflect the O Office District, which is compatible with residential development. The density area, yard, and heights regulations, if developed for residential, would be the same as RA1, the existing zoning district. If it's non-residential, it would be the same as O Office District. We've included some other regulations that we hope will help bring a final development plan into compatibility with adjacent uses. First, that there be no unscreened outdoor storage allowed. Second, that all required screening of storage and parking to be minimum solid wood fencing, six foot high, no barred wire. Thirdly, a new construction design is to be compatible with residential homes in the neighborhood, single-story with pitched roofs, shingled, employing residential materials and colors. Then, any change in use requires a final development plan application to the planning commission. And finally, hard surface driving and parking improvements are required with the first final development plan. We feel that these regulations, then, if followed in the final development plan, would make them compatible with the neighborhood, and staff is recommending approval, subject to those regulations. We've had no calls from adjacent property owners, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Steve?
No? Thank you. The petitioner here, please.
Good evening. Brad Gulaitson, representing the Head Companies, 1300 West Fifty-seventh Street. And our, our goal here was to assist the Taylors in this effort to expand the zoning so that they would have a little better opportunities to sell the, the facility. They've been subsidizing this, and it got to the point where they're just kind of weary of it. They're, they, for some reason, aren't here tonight because they thought the weather would be better in Arizona, I guess, so that's, that's what I'm here for. We did have a neighborhood meeting. A couple of the neighbors that were there that night are here tonight. Some of the questions they expressed, these fellows and others expressed, were just to get a handle on what, what the potential uses could be, with specific questions about noise, storage, about hours of operation. And the neighbors had some questions about, I think there'd been some, some larceny of, you know, varying degrees in the area, and they were wondering just what the, what can of worms they might be looking at here. And then they also had questions about the fact that they thought the zoning that had taken place to the north, where, where all those tires are right now, in that retreading situation, where the people are vacated and the tires are still there, and they're just wondering, you know, what they might be getting into. So that, that's, those are some of the, you know, the questions that we had. So I'm available for any questions or expand upon that at all, if you'd like. If not...
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, how, how were you able to answer some of those questions that came up with the neighbors? Were they satisfied with the answers, et cetera?
Well, the Taylors had a partnership with the city, I think, on this to accommodate some juveniles and, and the boxing over, over a long period of time. And they had pretty good relationships with the neighbors. And the building sat empty along, along, you know, parts, parts of the year. And so, in order to try to help bring in some income, they, they entered in some agreements with groups to make, you know, graduation parties and those types of things there. And some of them didn't work out very well. And the Taylors learned from that. And so, I think some of the questions came from that. We thought that limiting the hours of operation, perhaps, and, you know, in the subsequent request for uses there, might, might satisfy them. Of course, we couldn't guarantee anything. The storage rule with the, with the fencing, I think, may have been, been something they were glad to hear. And so, we did the best we could with the, with the few questions we had. We had three parties come over and, and visit with us. And one of the fellows was, was in support completely, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Anything else?
Anyone else from the audience care to speak on this item?
Dennis Duncan. I live at 1821 East Thirty-fourth Street, right next to this boxing center. I think the only reason that you're trying to rezone this is so Mr. Taylor can sell his property. I hate to see it turn into a business there when it's a completely family, uh, neighborhood. You built the Habitat Humanity right next door there for families, and now you want to change it. You changed the zoning before so he could build his boxing center, and you did that. But now you want to change it again. It doesn't make my property worth anymore just so he can sell his property. And there has been a few problems after the boxing center. I've got nothing against the boxing center and the kids and having the lunch program. I'm all in favor of that. I think you should leave it as a residential neighborhood. Across the street is where you have your mess with your tires and that. I don't think, I don't think that many residents, he said three showed up. I don't think that many people know about what's going on up there. I think very few people stop and look at that zoning plan. To me, I, I got a letter, but I don't know of anybody else that got a letter.
Any questions for Dennis?
Madam Chair, Dennis, this is, tonight's item is a rezone to a planned development. Is, and if I understand, the, the process going forward, any development plans will have to come back to the planning commission in the form of a final development plan. And that, again, will be an opportunity for you and the neighbors to actually see and discuss and hopefully attend a neighborhood meeting to learn more about what's actually being planned. Right now, we're just talking about the ground. But the minute the Taylors decide to do something in terms of another use, it has to come back to this body.
I think more people in the neighborhood should receive the notice a lot more.
Yeah, we don't know how many people are notified, but we do encourage applicants to have those neighborhood meetings.
Okay. I think it's wrong if you're just trying to zone it just so Mr. Taylor can sell his property. It's wrong. You changed it already so he could build that monstrosity next to me before. It was, it's not what it was supposed to be.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on item number thirteen? No? Okay, thank you. I'll look for commission action on item number thirteen.
Madam Chair, considering what I just said, and that was that this is becoming a planned development, and any development plans going forward have to come back for review and approval by the planning commission, I would move for approval of item thirteen.
Thank you, Meredith.
I would second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, item number thirteen, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item number thirteen carries. Item number fourteen, staff report, please.
Item number fourteen is a rezoning petition from the C2 General Commercial District to the Eleventh and Duluth Planned Development District for allowed uses. The applicant is Erica Beck with the City of Sioux Falls Planning Office, who's here tonight. And Joan Franken, I believe, is representing some of the, some of the development, development companies with this, so I think she's also here tonight. The general location is on the south side of Eleventh Street between Spring and Duluth Avenue, avenues. The area is about one and a quarter acres, and the Shap Sioux Falls designation has this as a redevelopment neighborhood. You may remember that recently, I believe it was November, August, in fact, that you, you approved the Pettigrew Heights redevelopment plan in this area, and the city council's also recently seen that and, and passed it. So this is one project that will, that is part of that, part of that discussion. To the north is C2 General Commercial. To the south is C2 and RA1, one residential. To the east is C2, and to the west is C2. A lot of that C2 is actually residential uses in that area and was owned, C2 was part of a comprehensive rezoning from several decades ago. The compatibility ratings, as you note, are mostly four. To the west, we have a C2 General Commercial, and that compatibility rating has been given a three, just due to the nature of the, of the residential uses of this project. But again, it's one of those things that we look at as to what the applicant is doing to address some of those potential incompatibilities. The zoning district acreage and lot summary is that existing is C2, but one and a quarter acres in the Pettigrew Heights, Eleventh and Duluth, is what's proposed for, for the same amount of acreage. In 2008, the city of Sioux Falls issued a request for proposals for redevelopment of the site known as Eleventh and Duluth and Pettigrew Heights. The site included eleven parcels of property, ten residential structures, and twenty-seven residential units. As a response to the RFP, the city received and awarded a proposal from St. Joseph Catholic Housing. The outcome of the awarded proposal will include the construction of a multi-story, mixed-use building that will accommodate a minimum of fifty-seven elderly housing units on the top three floors and neighborhood-oriented retail and light commercial on the first floor. The city has worked jointly with St. Joseph Catholic Housing to pursue low-income housing tax credits, home funds, and neighborhood stabilization program funding from the South Dakota Housing and Redevelopment Authority. With an award of partial funding in August of 2009, the city is now ready to move forward with preparation of the site, including rezoning, for transfer of the property to St. Joseph Catholic Housing in the latter part of 2010. The city anticipates this development serving as a catalyst for additional growth within the Pettigrew Heights neighborhood, and the project will create fifty-seven new, safe, and affordable housing units for the community. Proposed regulations include the subarea regulations that have been attached to your report, and I'll go over some of the, some of the components of that in just a second. As I stated, the location is at West Eleventh Street between South Duluth and South Spring. Access will be taken from South Duluth and Spring avenues, and transit routes are also available in the area. The required setbacks for the proposed district, the applicant has indicated that four-foot front, four-foot front yard setback, ten-foot side yard setbacks, and a zero-foot rear yard setback will be required for the development of this proposal. And there have been, and these have been written into the proposed subarea regulations. Parking is to be regulated also by the subarea regulations, and a total of one hundred and four parking spaces are available onsite, according to the preliminary sketch plans. The Pettigrew Heights neighborhood has been designated by the comprehensive plan as a redevelopment area. The city has been working with the neighborhood for several years in order to provide assistance towards stabilizing the character of the neighborhood and providing opportunities for redevelopment. This specific project will provide a mixed-use building that will provide senior housing and limited office and commercial uses. This fits in with the general character of the area, with some commercial along West Eleventh Street and multifamily residential in surrounding areas. This rezoning request begins a process of site preparation for the project. Other approvals needed will include vacation of the North South Alley, relocation of some utility services, and the plating of the property for transfer. In addition, at a later time, a final In addition, at a later time, a final development plan will require from Planning Commission approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Because the subject application enhances a redevelopment of Pettigrew Heights neighborhood and is in conformance with the Shapeshoe Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, we are recommending approval of the rezoning with the following subarea regulations and I'll just highlight some of the changes, not changes, but some of the main points of this. The applicant is asking for those permitted and permitted special uses in the office district and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and the RA1 Residential District to be allowed. Those office and commercial uses are to be located on the first floor. Residential uses will be located on the second, third, and fourth floor. On-sale alcohol, on-sale or off-sale alcohol establishments shall not be allowed within this planned development district and it should also be constructed to allow a church or a daycare center. As I highlighted in some of the others, there's been some setback modifications from some conventional zoning districts in order for the development of parcel and the applicant has provided parking regulations to match the character of the development. In some of the other regulations, we've indicated that outdoor storage of mechanical equipment, materials, trash, and similar shall be screened from adjacent properties. All screening shall be constructed of materials identical to that of the main building. Building service, loading docks, garbage, and utilities shall be located and screened with an opaque wall compatible with the siding materials as a structure. Site lighting shall be designed to provide minimal impact to surrounding properties and ash trees shall be limited to comprise no more than 10% of the required tree planting total. That concludes the staff report and the subarea regulations. I'd like to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I'm just glad we didn't have to read that legal description tonight.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question for Dave.
Yes.
The existing land use, it says vacant on here. Is that true?
It is true. The city has...Erica will probably actually be able to address that a little bit better than I can, but I know that the city has acquired those properties and demoed some of them.
Okay, thank you.
Erica Beck with the City Planning Office. To address your question, the city acquired those properties in late 2008 and 10 out of the seven properties have been removed. There is one remaining and that will be removed yet this spring.
Thank you.
Be happy to address any other questions you have. Otherwise, Joan Franken and Mike Banworth are here representing St. Joseph Catholic Housing and I'm sure that they can answer any questions that you might have about the project as well.
Any questions of Erica? Thank you, Erica. Joan, Mike? Anything to add? Okay. Okay. I'll look for commission...excuse me, would anybody else from the audience like to speak on this item? No? I'll look for commission action then on item number 14.
Madam Chair. I move we approve the...addendum number 14. I would like to make an amendment to the subarea though.
Go for it, Mike.
Amendment number R, ash trees shall be limited to comprise no more than 10% of the required tree planting. I take that down to 0%? Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Item number 14 carries. Item number 15, staff report, please.
Item number 15 is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow a congregate care facility. The applicant is proposing to place a congregate care facility at an existing duplex at 2308 and 2310 West 39th Street. The size of the parcel is about one quarter of an acre and the Shapeshoe Falls designation in this area is as a developed area. Bidding zoning and land uses to the north, east, and west is RS2 Residential with single-family residential and then two-family residential units to the west. Those comprise a compatibility rating of four within the Shapeshoe Falls 2035 Plan. To the south is Jefferson Park, which is zoned RC, which is recreation conservation. The conditional use permit standard for assisted living centers and congregate care facilities indicate that such uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be detrimental due to large traffic flow or parking area. Such uses located in the RS1, RS2, and RD Residential District shall have a maximum building height limit of two stories. In addition, I've provided a definition within the report which indicates that an assisted living center and congregate care facility is a facility to provide apartment living for persons over the age of 55 or persons subject to chronic illnesses or infirmities but who do not need a level of nursing care provided in a licensed nursing home. Assisted living centers need not be licensed by the state of South Dakota but must provide at least one common hot meal per day for residents in the facility. In the conditional use permit plan, the applicant has shown that a 30-foot front yard setback is provided along South Holly Avenue with a 20-foot front yard setback along West 39th Street. A rear yard setback of approximately 27 feet exists and the side yard setback east of the property is labeled as 14-plus and the applicant has indicated a survey will be done to verify that distance and then maybe follow up with the zoning office depending upon how that comes out. The parking is required at a rate of one stall per three beds, which indicates that with eight individuals at a time being served, the required total of three parking stalls. They've shown that they can park two and then they're also eligible to receive a reduction in their parking requirements by providing a bicycle rack for their employees. So, I believe that that's also what they're expecting to do. The existing garage is being converted to bedrooms for the residents and as a result, that parking will be lost, but a new parking plan, which I believe is shown on the screen at the time of the staff report, we hadn't had it received yet, but the new parking plan shows that the parking will be relocated, the driveway and parking will be relocated to the north side of the property. And the applicant can describe how those plans are coming together when he comes up. South Dakota Achieve is proposing a congregate care facility at this location in order to house up to eight residents. Staff advise the applicant to speak with the neighbors on the proposal and he should be prepared to address the outcome of those discussions at this hearing. But because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and required, and it requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. One is that building setbacks are to be approved by the Sioux Falls Board of Adjustment if a setback variance is required and a parking plan is to be provided to the Planning Office for approval prior to construction. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions of Dave?
Okay, thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Paul Rickert, 13 South Dundee Drive here in Sioux Falls. Congregate living facility, that sounds like a great big place, maybe even a helicopter pad on the roof, lots of commotion going on, maybe long lonely hallways, but I'm very pleased that this home will be a modest, personal environment, providing accessible housing for adults with disabilities. Some of you are aware that South Dakota Achieve has been working in this type of residential landlord relationship for 15 years in Sioux Falls. Of course, South Dakota Achieve has been in Sioux Falls for 51 years, but what you might not know is they have over 30 similar locations around town and that was a surprising number to me. And I think the chief reason that that is a surprising number is that, you know, no issues, no headlines, no problems. I've been involved with Achieve in a similar residential relationship for over a year now, so we are familiar with each other and it's been a good relationship. I had a gentleman that in this new neighborhood raised the question about, well, what will happen in two years if Achieve moves out? And I don't think they will and I mean, I hope they won't and there are two members here tonight with South Dakota Achieve that could maybe address that in more detail if there's some questions, but I guess one thing that I would share is the word commitment and commitment's a two-way street. You know, as the landlord, I'm going to make modifications, accommodations, adjustments to the structure, to the bathrooms, to doorways, and other accessible items. Now, my lease is with each individual resident. South Dakota Achieve doesn't guarantee it. Those residents are able to leave if they choose, but what South Dakota Achieve has told me is they frequently have a waiting list for residential placement similar to this, as it is very desirable and it's a healthy way of living for these residents that they serve. And these residents are enthusiastic to have a place that they can call home. So, that along with the knowledge that there aren't a lot of facilities like this in Sioux Falls for adults with handicaps, either because from an initial construction perspective or landlords that are unwilling to make accommodations and open up their properties. So, I mean, that is why we are here and I'm very pleased to be doing something good for other people. So, I thank you and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions?
Madam Chair, Paul, you mentioned there are 30-some facilities that are associated with Achieve. I've been on the Planning Commission for quite a while now and over the years, we've had landlords similar to you and others come to the Planning Commission and we've had a long history, quite frankly, of working with landlords and service providers like Achieve, Decoabilities, and others to provide the appropriate housing that those folks need. So, we're familiar with the issues. Obviously, there are some concerns that you at least have become aware of relative to the neighbors, but we do understand the need as well for the housing needed for those people that have disabilities or other reasons for care. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair. Mr. Rickert.
Yes.
You said that there's no guarantee that people will, or people are in and out of the individual leases. What's an average stay?
Well, start out with a one-year lease. I would certainly be within my right to ask for a one-year renewal. At the facility that I have, which just a few months ago went past that anniversary mark, I felt out of respect and just an understanding, maybe with the guardians and things like that, I'm on a month-to-month situation going forward after that initial one-year period. I would quite likely do a similar relationship with the new residents and I think, you know... So, I don't anticipate a lot of coming and going. They have not experienced a lot of turnover at their other properties. Is that answering your question?
That was the question, is the amount of turnover that's expected from past experience and what you know from other similar facilities.
There's bound to be some, but they feel the need is high enough that another individual will move in within 30 to 60 days.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul?
Madam Chair, Mr. Rickert.
Yes.
Have you had neighborhood meetings? Have you discussed the plans, what's happening with the neighbors in the area?
I have had an opportunity to speak with the neighbor to the north, the neighbor to the west, neighbor kitty-corner to southwest, and also the owner of the property to the east. And some of those meetings have been in person, some have been over the phone.
What was the general reaction of the meetings? Were they positive? Were specific questions were you able to answer, et cetera?
Well, my initial meeting with the gentleman to the north is I was just, you know, kind of explaining to him because the driveway would come on the north side of this building and would end up being parallel with, you know, all the other driveways along Holly Avenue. And his comment was, you know, he would...you know, I couldn't explain it in detail exactly how this would come down as far as this procedure. I said, "I think it's a conditional use." He said, "Well, I would not be in favor of an easement or an adjustment if it came to that." And we talked a little bit longer and he said, "I've mentioned South Dakota Achieve," and he says, "Well, I'm..."I don't know if he used the exact word, "I'm pro," but he had a favorable opinion of South Dakota Achieve, had maybe an individual that he...there was an individual that he knew that worked there, I'm not sure if that was a family member or some past associate. So, he had a favorable opinion of South Dakota Achieve. The gentleman to the southwest, we had a phone conversation. He shared multiple concerns. Some, I think I'll let him speak to those. I tried to give him the facts. There was a lot of misinformation out there initially in the neighborhood. They felt it was going to be a drug rehab facility or maybe even rapist and as one concerned neighbor said, you know, "I'm not sure you can ever even rehab those people." And I had a nice conversation with her and assured her that was not the plan and at the end of the conversation, she invited me in for coffee, so I think that went well. The gentleman to southwest, I said, and the lady directly to the west, met with her personally and she echoed some of the concerns that her neighbor across the street had shared. She's a nice 90-year-old lady and so that's the group that I spoke with.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience wish to address this item?
I live at 2401 West 39th. I am the person to the southwest he was referring to. We had a neighborhood meeting without the applicant there. 13 people attended. All was very against this program. We compiled a list of concerns, and by the way, there's 10 of them people here tonight, and I'm going to read these concerns to you. They are in no particular order. This duplex sets where there's three more in the next two blocks, right? There's four duplex right in a row. If we zone that to congregate living, will the other duplexes follow suit? And now, we're going to have a whole row of congregate living and this is in a moderate neighborhood. Once it's zoned, it'll never go back to family practice or family living because he's going to totally turn this into a group home. As mentioned, Jefferson Park is just across the street, directly across the street, and the city just completely remodeled that park and made it a beautiful facility. They finished it late last summer and just in the couple of weeks or three weeks that we had before the weather turned bad, this park's use, we've lived there 36 years and the park use just jumped. You can't believe it. Because they have basketball court now, picnic shelter and everything. Children as young as possibly five ride their bikes and walk down there by themselves. We see it every day. I'm concerned that when the word gets out that this is a group home, parents won't understand for sure what's going on and I think they will err on the side of safety and not let their kids go to the park.
Okay, Ken, I want to stop you for a second here. You keep referring to it as a group home. It is not going to be zoned as a group home. It's going to be zoned as congregate care.
Okay, I will correct.
Which is a total different zoning.
Okay.
By the city standard.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Now, traffic, the residents of this congregate living, well, I've been told, will not have cars, but I understand also that they're free to come and go. So, we feel that their family and their friends can come and pick them up, take them shopping, out to eat, to church, you name it. So, you have eight people. So you have eight people coming and going, and the traffic may be quite a bit higher than the applicant thinks. Obviously, a main concern is the property values in our neighborhood will obviously go down. We feel this site is way too small for this plate, for, for this application. There's just not enough room to handle it, what he wants to do, and we feel it's a complete inappropriate use of the property. As far as parking on the street, all of this, most of this parking is used up because of the businesses on Forty-first Street, which is only two blocks away, they, they park clear up there. Now, if Achieve does move out, and I, and the applicant should understand that there's no such thing as never, and if somebody, if something does happen that Achieve moves out of here, who will move in? Can it be, once it's zoned, it probably won't have to come back to this peop-, to you people? And so maybe someone will move in, a halfway house for prisoners or drug or alcohol rehabilitation. A very, very critical thing that we feel is snow removal. Can you put up that plan? He wants to put, take the driveways out of there. There we go. We, we've taken a picture of this. This is where the driveway will be, right here. Now, according to the plans that we got, this driveway will go in so many feet and then there will be a walkway and a patio and an entry built there, so the snow cannot go forward, and I have no idea how they're gonna bring it out toward the street. And even if they do, where will they put it? I'm assuming it'll have to be hauled away, which is gonna require a truck in the street and some kind of a loading equipment in and out of the driveway disrupting traffic to a pretty high degree. There's a daycare across the street, a home daycare, where the driveways will almost buck to each other, not quite, but almost. So you're gonna have people coming and going there, both backing out of the same driveways on a commercial-type basis, and I think that that could be a problem too. And we feel there'd just be general disruption in the neighborhood that we don't have to tolerate. Everyone has the right to peace and quiet around their homes. The applicant indicates that he has another home like this. We investigated a little bit and found out that it's located between Sunny Crest Retirement Community and apartment buildings. So I really doubt if he has had very many neighborhood complaints there, because there's just nobody living there. It's, it's in a, it's in an area where that's designed to live like that. I have a letter here from an absentee owner who lives in Arlington, Virginia, that I would like to read, please.
Can we all have this letter? Thank you all have that.
Have you seen it?
Yes.
You're, okay. Okay, then, in that case, to summarize it, I'd like to say that our, our neighborhood, we have no animosity, we have no agenda with anybody with this venture, especially the people from Achieve. But we, we do believe that we have the right to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood as described in that letter through the city description of a neighborhood, where we can all live and that. And we just feel that this thing um, will not fit. There's just too many things about this that we feel will not work. So with that being said, I would highly recommend that you deny this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Any question, Ken, hang on. Any questions for Ken?
Madam Chair. Ken, just to answer some of your questions best I can. The uh, three adjoining, adjoining duplexes, uh, if those individuals or property owners were to decide to change the use, uh, much like Mr. Rickert is, he would have to, or she would have to come before this body and, and go through the same process that Mr. Rickert's going through tonight. Just because there's one congregate care facility doesn't mean that the rest of the neighborhoods uh, then able to make that transformation, okay?
Okay. But, but I believe my thought that, that if you had a, a duplex in a neighborhood that was okay for this, zoned for it, and the person very next door would ask for the same thing, it would be pretty tough to turn him down, I would think.
We, we deal with every item that comes before us, independent of what's happened before.
Okay.
This is not a rezone. This is a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Which is completely different. Typically, a conditional use permit is for this uh landlord only, and it doesn't necessarily entitle the, the next, if, if Paul were to sell this, it doesn't necessarily entitle the next landlord to maintain the same operation. It's not a rezone. It's a conditional use permit in a residential zone, which is completely different.
I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Uh, Jefferson Park, uh, wonderful park. I saw the plans for that before that was redone. I'd be real surprised if a group home, uh, and, and most people understand that these aren't dangerous people. Would scare parents and children away from that park. If it's a great park, it'll get used.
Well, I understand what, excuse me, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, there's many, many things happen that we don't like. And with these parents, a lot of them, are we gonna go next to all the parents and, and tell them who's living there? They're gonna find out through the grapevine, through, that there's people living there, and they don't know who they are, and I'm just afraid that they'll tell their kids that they just better not go down there.
I wouldn't tell my children that.
Well, maybe not. But I, I, I think there's parents nowadays that would.
Paul, do you know all your neighbors and what they do within the confines of their four walls and as it stands right now? I would venture to say that you don't.
Well.
So to, and again, this is not a group home. This is a congregate care facility, and I really caution you to use the words correctly.
Yeah.
Because we are talking about an identity here that is completely different.
Just a couple more things. Traffic, uh, this looks to me as if it's on a collector's street, which is, is designed and engineered to handle this type of traffic. We always hear the property value argument. Uh, we haven't really experienced any of that yet, uh, with these sorts of facilities. Site is too small. It, it's not too small according to the zoning. There may be a setback issue on one side, but other than that, my understanding is it meets the setback requirements that the city sets for your home and this particular use. So you're making a judgment there that's not in accordance with the zoning law. Occupancy, uh, again, it's a conditional use for congregate care facility. They cannot legally move in prisoners and drug addicts. That's a completely different use. It does not fall under this conditional use permit. Snow removal, I would guess that Paul would handle his snow removal just like all of the neighbors. Where do you put the snow in your driveway?
Our, my driveway is not up against, it is not between a building and a fence.
Well, he's got a side yard there that's what, thirty-foot deep? That he could put snow on.
Um, I think that's where they're gonna put the parking.
No, he's got a side yard. He's putting, he's putting the parking in the, in the rear yard, isn't he, Steve?
He's got, he's got a side there, but by the same token, he's got a pretty good area up between the building and, and I understand he's gonna build a fence there. He told a neighbor to the north he's gonna build a fence. I honestly don't know how he's gonna get that snow out of there. I really don't.
Well, we typically don't worry about where people put the snow because we're dealing with land uses, but my guess is that he's not gonna be able to put it in the street because I don't think that's something that uh, the city wants anyone to do.
Well, I don't think it's legal, to be honest with you.
Right. Um, daycare, do you know if the daycare that's across the street is even registered with the city and the state?
Positive, they're here.
There are a lot of uh, daycares around that are not.
This is fully legal, I'm sure.
And that's fine. I'm just asking the question. It's part of, do you know your neighbor question? And I don't, I guess I don't personally understand how this is a disruption considering the occupancy of the home.
Well, it was just a, it was something that was brought up, but I don't know who mentioned it. We just, we just sat down and we went through some things and we jotted them down, and then I copied them down and wrote them down.
Appreciate that.
Did you by chance invite the petitioner to your neighborhood meeting?
No, I didn't, to be honest with you.
Okay.
The conversation between him and I was not a hundred percent good, so I didn't do it. I, I would have much rather had him come to me personally than to call. I operate a business and I don't always have time to stop and, at the ring of another phone and talk about this kind of stuff. I wasn't prepared and he dropped this on me.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ken? Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this item? I will remind you to hold your comments to five minutes, and we are looking for new testimony that we haven't heard before, so come forward, please.
Thanks for your time. Uh, my name is Michael Casten, I live at thirty-one oh-eight South Elmwood. It's approximately a block west of this location. And I've been a resident of this neighborhood for a little over seventeen years, so I can appreciate some of the issues here. Um, this thing's kinda degraded into an issue of personalities more than issues of residency. Excuse me. The group home issue was never an issue for anyone in the neighborhood. The people moving in are not the issue. And I think, uh, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, Paul. Paul mentioned that it was brought up at the time, what happens if Achieve decides it's not using this facility anymore? Never really answered the question. That's really what the neighbors are concerned about. Let's say Achieve decides they're gonna move on to a bigger and better facility, something more usable to their needs, then what happens to the building? The building was a duplex, could be rented to two families, two people, two individuals. Now you've got this thing that's been redesigned to be cost prohibitive to change back into anything else. That's the concern in the neighborhood. Now what do you do with it? That's really the issue. Um, could I, could I ask you to bring the, I'm sure they'll haul them up again, the close-up, if you would?
I used, I live on Elmwood. I've lived there for a number of years when the stoplight, um, I actually want the overhead of the summer picture. Yeah. Uh, when the stoplight was down on Forty-first Street in Elmwood, I noticed once the stoplight got moved, traffic dropped off significantly. Much more comfortable with my kids out on the lawn. Um, a number of accidents at Thirty-ninth and Elmwood over the years. Just glad the stoplight moved. Obviously, the traffic flow moved with it. Um, there's one more of a close-up of the house I'd like to see. Yeah, that'd be good. I notice there's one car on that picture. I think I can count on one hand how many times I've seen one car on that street. That park is used heavily, even before it was remodeled, there was a lot of traffic there. Not so much in the winter, but summertime, you've got softball players that are around the clock. My kids tried to practice soccer over there. They may have gotten the field half the time, used very heavily. The problem with it in the wintertime is if you could drive by now, that and Elmwood both are essentially a one-lane street. You've got apartment buildings, you've got businesses, cars are parked on both sides of the street. You come up, you slide into a spot, let somebody go by, you slide into another spot, let somebody go by. I understand this home is going to have parking for three vehicles, one vehicle for every three beds, I guess. Now you're gonna add to that friends, family that show up, you're gonna add snow removal, you're gonna have commercial food, um, they're gonna provide one meal a day. That's just what we know. I'm not sure what medical issues are gonna be taken up here. That's gonna be additional traffic, additional spaces taken up. The snow, um, I, I personally don't really care what they do with the snow. I just know in a year like this, that pile's gonna be out by the street somewhere. You know, I, I drive a pickup, so corners aren't that big a deal to me. I have some vision. Um, but my wife drives a Honda Accord, and when I drive that, especially at that corner and Elmwood, it's difficult because those cars park right up to the corner. Now you're gonna turn around and wrap traffic on up Holly a little further. Now all four ways are just gonna be blind cars. Instead of one person maybe seeing the other pull out, now you've got two people coming to an intersection that is very occluded. I have concerns about that also. And again, I don't wanna confuse this with the people moving in. I have no problem with that. My concern is who's gonna manage it down the road? What if it needs to be something else? I don't think any of us are gonna be here at that point to decide what it will or won't be. I just don't want it to be something bad. The lady that lives across the street, you mentioned Bernice and her deceased husband, Andy, both built that house there, I don't know how many years ago they did that, I think thirty-some years ago. She still lives there. Her sister's trying to get her to move to Phoenix. It's her home, she does not wanna move. She would've been here tonight, but we didn't wanna bring her out on the ice. You know, I'm concerned about here. She's not here that much longer. But you know, that's all she's got tied to her husband. It's that home. I'd hate to see that neighborhood degraded, if nothing else for her. I can always move. That's where she lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions?
Mike, what, what exactly do you feel, I mean, you've come up with all these physical things that you suggest will degrade the neighborhood, but you don't want to blame it on the residents?
No, no, it's, I think when Ken was up here, the issue got to be an issue of, we don't want these people there. The issue is not the people, it's the space you're trying to put them in. The constraints of that place, right there, when you put an alley, not an alley, a driveway down the back, and all the additional traffic is gonna be there opposed to what's there right now, the people that live there now have a driveway and a garage. You don't see their cars. The cars are off the streets. They bring their car in, they take their car out. There are no additional snow removal vehicles.
How do you know that this, these occupants will generate this, all this additional traffic? You're guessing?
No, no. We were told that there would be a food service there for at least one meal a day, it had to be provided. We know snow removal's gonna have to happen, and that's not gonna happen with just a snowblower 'cause there's no place to put it. You're gonna have to bring a truck in, or you're gonna have to put it on the neighbor's lawn. So we know that's gonna happen. We also know there's gonna be at least one additional car. Just by code, there'll be one additional car.
No, no, there doesn't necessarily have to be one extra car. Uh, Mr. Loveland stated that if they install a bike rack, they can get by with two cars.
Do you ride a bike in January?
I don't.
I don't. I do in the summer, but I don't in January. Those cars are gonna have to go somewhere. And I imagine they're gonna go on the street because you have no driveway anymore, and that back is gonna be access to the home. I understand that. I can appreciate there are some difficulties with this site, but I'm just here to voice my concerns about them. Now, if they're not valid, fine, but I don't wanna be the one to say, I didn't say something, and have something happen there at that intersection. There are actually two daycares within a block of that home, registered daycares. You have a lot of kids and a lot of traffic that's not even being accounted for here.
Any other questions for Mike?
Is that it?
My guess, Mike, is that those daycares generate way more traffic than you're gonna see out of this congregate care facility in a week's time, probably.
They all add to it. It's not on my street, but I know what that stoplight did to my street, and now that's all been moved to the next street. So when the neighbors say they have a concern about it, I can empathize with them. I lived through that for ten years with two young children. We had a shooting incident a few years ago on my street that I think we'll all remember. There'd been several accidents, had a postal truck crash on my corner. That was all before that sign was moved. Not the shooting issue made any difference with the sign. But I mean, those are the kind of things that happen in my neighborhood, for whatever reason. The daycares are just there adding to the congestion and the confusion, all the cars parked in the street compounded more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Paul.
If I could, I'd like to just show you, I took the drawing and I'd like to put the snow removal issue uh, to bed, so to speak. I think it might've been- snow removal issue to bed, so to speak. I think it might have been Steve, I mean, as Meredith pointed out, there's, there's plenty of room to put the snow. I, I would do what I hope every other neighbor along that street is doing, you know, take the snow on the driveway and blow it there. There's, there's no reason in the world why I can't take the snow off that driveway straight east. And there's all kinds of room there. You're talking about a patio that's going to be there. Again, I don't know, we're not using the patio during January and things like that. So that's, I mean, that's wide open ground. That picture they had even showed how wide open that is. So I, I don't see the snow removal as an issue at all. It's not going out in the streets. It's not going to create a big pile at the corner that cars can't see around, in my opinion. The other, the other one is just my own artist rendering of what, what this proposal would look like. And again, I said the driveway are basically going to be parallel with all the other driveways on Holly Avenue. The cement in the front will come out, make that more appealing. It was noted that the garage area is being removed, torn, you know, taken down. That is, that's not. It's structurally going to stay on the exterior as is. It is going to be modified to accommodate two people in wheelchairs, you know, a large, two large bedrooms and a new, new bathroom facility. And we'd be happy to talk a little bit about the staffing, the coming and going. Basically, I can tell you that there's, there's a one pickoff, pickup time in the morning. It's basically right around 8:30. The residents go to Achieve where they receive their services. They come back at 3:00, 3:30, 4 o'clock. And that, in a nutshell, is the, the coming and going. There is staff that's with them 24 hours. And this is, I mean, the overnight people are not sleeping in the adjoining room. They are up and active and looking after the people. And, and that's where you get your two, maybe, maybe would peak to three at given times, staff that are there. We would be willing to, you know, talk about carpooling or things like that if it is an issue. And I'm not, you know, I appreciate, this is a great forum for people to come and, and talk and speak, speak what they have. I, I, you know, I, I do want to get the facts out there and let us all operate from facts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, I, excuse me, Madam Chairman. Paul, I do have a question now because you just raised something. You said earlier, and something here was said, that there has to be one staff member for two people. Is that correct?
One.
For, for two clients living in the facility. Is that correct? So there'll be one staff member on duty for every two members or two clients that are at this congregate care facility. Am I correct in saying that?
I think I'll let them speak to that. There are, there are different ratios for different individuals that they would place in the facility.
Hi, my name is Jean. I work at South Dakota Achieve. I'm the head of the residential program there.
Jean, we need your last name and your address, please.
Jean Crowe, 4100 South Western Avenue is the main agency, South Dakota Achieve. We have residential locations located throughout the city and our staffing ratios depend based on the needs of people. In this particular home, we, we haven't decided exactly who will move into this home. We partner with the state of South Dakota. Some people may be moving in from Redfield State Hospital and School, but like I said, we have several residential sites throughout the city of Sioux Falls. So if they move in, someone from our larger group homes may move into this home and then that person coming in from outside may move into a larger group home. So for right now, we're not sure exactly who will be moving in. But based on what I've heard tonight, I, I hear the concerns of the neighborhood and we want to be good neighbors. That's who we are. And we have not had any problems in our, in our neighborhoods. They're based, like I said, throughout the, the city of Sioux Falls. So we will definitely take this information back to the main agency and we will talk about it. Right now, I'm thinking at the most we would have three staff at this home is, is what I'm thinking. If parking is going to be an issue, at the most, at peak times, it could be four staff. But the main agency is not located that far from this location. So we could do carpooling and things like that to work it out with the neighborhood.
Okay, that, that was the, that was the question, is how many staff would normally be on duty there?
And it, and it does. It just really depends based on the needs of people. In some of our locations, the ratio is one to four. In other locations, it's a one to two. But I'm thinking with eight people, if, if we had three staff on during the day, maybe four people, depending on what's going on, what kind of activities are going on for that day, if people are going shopping or whatever. Sometimes you increase that staffing. At night, there would be two staff probably on for, for two people, for eight people.
Okay. And what I'm working at is, is more towards the parking issue.
Okay.
Because, is, and none of the clients will be able to drive themselves. So they will not have any, okay. Because somewhere it was, and I should have circled it, but they, they said that there, there was possibility that there was one parking spot for three beds. So there was, that would be three additional parking places. Is that how that works? That's more for staff?
My understanding is that there's, there's.
For the city planning staff. That was, that was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question for me?
Okay. In the, in your, yeah, where it says parking, parking is required at a rate of three stalls, or one stall per three beds, which would be three.
Right.
Or four parking spots, I think. And then because of the bike rack, you're going to go down to.
You're allowed to go down to two with the bike.
Okay, does that include staffing?
That includes staffing. That is the ratio that's required. They meet our parking ordinance right now.
Okay.
With this plan, they meet our parking ordinance.
All right. So with four staff?
They'll, they'll meet our parking ordinance. So it's, it's on a bed, it's on a bed basis. It's not on a staff basis.
All right. And that's where I had the misunderstanding. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address this item? Come on back, Mike. And again, I'm looking for new.
Mike Castenova. I brought up the traffic issue and this really is a new question. What additional vehicles are going to be coming into this facility? Are we bringing personal vehicles to take these people out, buses? How's the transportation issue going here? I guess I didn't understand. If I could ask.
Can I ask her to come back?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in most of our homes, we have a van, sometimes a larger van, depending on how many people live in the homes. If it's a, if it's a large group home, we have larger vans. In this particular home, we would have one van, which would easily be able to accommodate eight people. And then, plus whatever vehicles our staff would have. But again, if parking is a problem, we would have to reevaluate that because we want to be good neighbors.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public testimony on item number 15. I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I really believe this is a good fit, considering the experience we've had with Achieve and some of the other service providers. And so I would make the motion to approve this conditional use permit with the two stipulations.
Thank you. I'll look for a second.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Any discussion? Meredith, I would have to agree with you. It's often that these items come before the commission and the concerns that these neighbors brought forward are not different than other neighbors. It, we can say, though, the majority of the fears of, that have come in other neighborhoods have not come to fruition. It's great, it's a great land use and that's really what our issue is here to decide tonight. Is this a good land use? I understand some of the neighbors have concern that it might be tight, but it does fit the zoning requirements. And it certainly, I would agree with you, fits the neighborhood. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 15 signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed signify by saying no. Item number 15 carries. Item number 16. Wait a second, here.
Item 16, actually, item 16 and 17 are similar. Item 16 is a minor amendment to allow approval of a final development plan, which is item 17. I will take item 16 first. It's in University Hill's Plan Development. What they're requesting is a minor amendment in Subarea C of the University Hill's Plan Development District to adjust setback requirements. And there are two situations that come about in their plan for final development of one of the properties in that subdivision. The first has to do with the subarea requirement that there be a minimum setback along one side of that subarea that they would like to reduce because of the irregular shape of the subarea being caused by the right-of-way for a new street coming in. So it actually tapers down a little bit, gets a little narrow to one end. They are maintaining the required setback for a majority of the distance. The other one has to do with the building, a setback requirement that they would like to increase, which we don't run into very often. But the reason for increasing the setback requirement is to accommodate the landscaping and site plan that they have developed and is actually improving the, the quality of the project by doing that. It's in a subarea that allows mixed-use development. However, the project that they're proposing is going to be just residential. It's a four-story building, apartments. And the context is an urban environment, which would share open, open spaces within that environment and also later on in the subdivision, some mixed uses, which would be commercial on the first level and residential up above. You've seen the plan, concept, in approval of the rezoning that went to the plan development. We think it's a, it's an innovative plan, well thought out. Two requirements, however, were that they had come up with a master plan for landscaping and a master plan for signage for approval by the planning director. And those plans have been put together and submitted and have been approved by the planning director so that we can use those in approval of the final development plan. We feel that those requirements, then, because the project is a planned development and the subject property is within that planned development, has been given a compatible rating of five, which is identical to pre-existing zoning districts, are totally compatible, and development is being designed consistent with good planning practice. The Subarea C intent, as I mentioned, requires the other regulations that no more than five-foot setbacks adjacent to all multifamily frontages except the village's northern and southernmost subarea boundary, where there should be at least a 25-foot setback, and that they incorporate wide downtown-like sidewalks of 10 to 12 feet, and that the west boundary of the subarea and along the southeast boundary adjacent to Marion Road, the setbacks should be at least 25 feet or equal to the heights of the building. We feel that with these minor amendments, they have maintained the character of the development and have not adversely impacted their final development plan and we're recommending approval. Had no calls. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Steve?
Madam Chair, on this list, Steve, it also talks about changing the maximum height.
That was initially the request. When staff did our research, we found in the subarea regulations, if you go to Subarea C Heights Regulations, they are allowed unlimited heights subject to FAA approval.
So that's, that's not.
Was not part of their request. It's not necessary to act on that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Madam Chair, Steve, the, the change from the, the maximum setback to multifamily frontages to seven feet in lieu of the five feet.
It was supposed to be five feet. They want greater setback to allow for their landscaping plan.
Okay.
Steve, do they need to get a, to get a change on that if they want to make it bigger?
The subarea said a maximum of five feet.
Okay.
Had to do with the concept of an urban environment, trying to maintain the close proximity of the, of the pedestrian surface to the building entrances so that you didn't have a long ways to go.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Hi, good evening. I'm Sarah Aldinger with Architecture Incorporated. I'm here with the owner and members of the design team and we'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Any questions, Sarah? You ready to start digging out there, Sarah?
This spring, hopefully, so, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, if it comes, when it comes.
Doesn't look like anybody has any questions. Sarah, thank you. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Thank you. I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I move we approve item 16.
I will second that. You have a motion in second. All those in favor, please, oh. Any discussion, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, no? Item number 16 carries. Item number 17.
Item 17 is the final development plan for this project, University Hill Apartments. Applicant is Architecture Incorporated, represented by Sarah Aldinger and the owner of Jared Smart Universal Properties LLC. In their request for development of an apartment building, they have indicated four plans, building elevation, site plan. And as I mentioned before, a master plan for landscaping and signage has been approved by the planning director. They are conforming to those master plans with their proposed development. Staff has mentioned to them that the fire department was concerned a little bit about trees being planted on the east side of the building. Because it's a four-story structure, they need to get their, their ladders up to that and they can, they don't want to go through the trees. They'd like to go over the trees. So we have indicated that in our recommendation that those trees be lowered to a height that meets the fire department requirements. Otherwise, a compatibility rating is a five, the highest we can get for evaluation of this type of, of development in the plan development. I think that that pretty well addresses it. We have a pretty complete description if you have any questions about the landscaping or signage. And perhaps the applicant would like to speak to the concept there a little bit, just for your, your information. Because we are going to get other final development plans in that will similarly have to conform to those master plans. So establishing a good understanding at the present time would be, would be appropriate. Otherwise, setbacks, parking requirements have been met. There's a total of 183 spaces for 122 apartment living units. The way this block is being designed, there's a shared parking situation to the center of the block and on-street parking at the perimeter. Again, that was a concept that was presented in the, in the rezoning for the plan development district. Only a portion of that total parking is being assigned to the current project. The rest of it would be assigned to the other project on that block when it comes in for your approval. And there would have to be another final development plan come to you for that. And there would have to be another final development plan come to you for that. Building is as located at the northeast corner of the block. As in the approved subdivision, is one block east of North Marion Road. So it's going to have its own entrance off of Marion Road for the foreseeable future. It's the first project in this subdivision. So they have to establish that concept of an entrance into the subdivision, and that's a portion of the landscaping and signage deals with that. But it's included in this first project, so we expect that it's going to have a great presence out there to start with and should be beneficial to future projects as well. Because the subject application is consistent with the PD development intent for SubArea C in the proposed project otherwise conforms to subarea regulations, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with two stipulations. First, the tree plantings on the east side of the building may not exceed a maximum height allowed by the fire department for emergency vehicle access to upper floors. And second, that landscaping maintenance agreements are required for all streetscape and landscaping improvements provided in public right-of-way, and the agreements shall be provided to the planning office. Now, we've had no calls, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve.
Madam Chair, Steve, you talked about the parking, the shared parking in the middle. Only a portion of that is assigned to this project. I'm assuming that the perimeter parking is all assigned, and then the portion of the parking outline is. Will all of the parking in the middle be complete even before the other structures are built?
I'll let the petitioner address that, because I'm not quite sure what their construction phasing is going to be. It could well be that they're going to construct more parking than what they need for Phase One.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Steve?
Madam Chair, Steve, I have to ask, ash trees?
Actually, in the landscape schedule that they provided in the master plan, there was a proper ratio. I just don't recall, because the planning director approved it, whether there were any ash trees in there or not. That'd be another good question.
It's too small to see. Thank you.
Sarah, are you ready to come and talk about some trees?
Hi, again, I'm Sarah Aldinger with Architecture Incorporated. A few things we want to stipulate. We felt that the signage master plan was still a work in progress. We actually talked to the planning director, and it is actually in the report, that he agreed that we could keep working on that, get it finalized before we go for a building permit. I'm not sure about the ash trees. The landscape designer conflated the landscape architecture. They're not here tonight. But I don't see any.
Thank you.
And we're happy to, you know, modify the trees to work with the fire department.
Great.
As far as the parking issue goes, we are building more spaces in that interior parking lot than required, because they share an access aisle that we need to access the parking. So if you see the perimeter parking on the interior around Building 7, those spaces will not be built until Building 7 is constructed. All the other spaces in that interior parking lot will be constructed. So right now, we'll be exceeding our parking requirement.
Madam Chair, Sarah, I'm sorry. But when Building 7 is built, the stalls will fit but need to be there for the
Correct. We were asked to do a master plan to show how Buildings 6 and 7 would work on those two lots. So that's what that drawing shows.
Thank you.
Any other
Madam Chair, Sarah, I like the look of the building. Red. Anxious to see the red.
I'm not sure we'd finalize the color selections.
That's what this hearing is all about, is to rubber stamp the color scheme. But my big question is whether your civil engineer has figured out where to pile all the snow.
He is here, if you'd like to talk to him about that.
Sure, it's been considered. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else in the audience like to speak on this issue? On this item? No? I'll look for commission action on item number 17, please.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of item 17 with the two stipulations.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second? Discussion? All those in favor of item number 17 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Item 17 carries. Item number 18?
Jeff Schmidt on this planning item. Parking regulations are set by land use. And currently, in the campground land use, there's parking requirements for non-residential buildings and parking surfaces. We're going to exempt those and reduce the requirements to address campground users, to make them happy.
Just that simple.
Just that simple.
Great.
That's what we're about.
Any questions, Jeff?
Thank you.
Doesn't appear that anybody wants to talk about campgrounds tonight. So having said that, I'll look for commission action on item number 18. Or Jeff, you could be in trouble.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of the revised ordinance.
Thank you. We have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of item number 18 signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Item number 18 carries. I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Sorry? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
I don't think I have that in my packet. For real, I don't have anything. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for Chairs Four.
Because Commissioner Dunlap is not here to do so, I am proud to be able to nominate Meredith Larson as our chair for this year.
Great.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and seconded. All in favor of Meredith being the next planning commissioner signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Meredith. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I recommend that we, I nominate yourself, Jesse Schmidt, as the Planning Commission Vice Chair.
Thank you, I think.
Second.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.